Say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. This meeting is being televised by Chelmsford Telemedia. Is there anyone planning to record? I don't see anyone, so that's good.
Donna's on vacation.
Yeah, I saw that. At this time, I'd like to invite George Simonian from the Alumni Association to speak to us.
Thank you.
So he can go home, go to bed. He never sleeps. He's too active.
Leading your read.
What do you read, George?
The Chelmsford High School Alumni Association is very pleased to announce its 19th annual awards night. I believe, 19. It will be held on Tuesday night, the 23rd of May, next week, at 7:30 PM. The Carl Landina Performing Arts Center at CHS. The Alumni Association is also proud to announce that awards will be presented to worthy Chelmsford High School seniors and alumni. This year, the total monetary value of the awards exceed $56,000. In fact, to date, the Alumni Association has presented, including this year, over 1,700 scholarships, totaling well over $755,000. As I say, who's counting? That's a lot of giving back. As you know, that's one of my saying, you know, one of my mottoes. Give back. Don't always take. Give back. We of the Alumni Association are very proud of our Chelmsford High School and of the scholars it produces. You got two of them right here. Was being tonight is the, well, he was. The president of the Association, Terry, he will be doing the awards that night. He's the emcee and he does a great job with it. I'm quite sure that you've all been invited and I hope you are able to come and help present scholarships that evening. Any questions?
Looking forward to it.
Good, good. I saw.
Handsome.
Two, two, two little boys right here. Did you know that? Did you know that he's a graduate?
I did, but I guess.
Did you know he's a graduate, too? Did you know that he's a graduate?
It's okay.
Yeah, oh yeah. In fact, they played in the same football team.
With his brother. Dennis, have we played together?
Yeah, you've.
I would think I was maybe a sophomore, you were senior. And Sean, your brother Sean was a same as me.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any questions? No questions?
Well, looking forward to it.
Piece of cake.
Yes.
You've earned the right to have a piece of cake.
Thank you, thank you. Well, enjoy the evening. Thank you very much. See you next week, okay?
Thanks.
Please come. Thank you very much.
The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'd like to ask if anyone has questions or corrections on, on any of these things and if there aren't any, then maybe we can just do one vote.
That's fine.
Did anyone find any mistakes or have anything that they would like to address within these documents?
If I wasn't in one of these meetings, are we voting for them all or we just voted for us a group?
Oh.
I wasn't in one of the meetings.
I think we have to go one by one.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
No, that's all right. That's why I asked. So we would know. All right. Minutes of the reorganization meeting of April 5th.
Mr. Chairman, I make an approval, I make a recommendation, a motion to approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting of April 5th, 2017, sir.
Second.
Any discussion on that meeting? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any negative vote or abstention? unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee dated April 11th, 2017, sir.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was late for that meeting. Can I vote yes? Or just abstain?
Did you miss most of the meeting or?
8:00 PM, 7:42.
Probably abstain.
Yeah, then it's clean and it doesn't get ruined.
Got it.
So there's one abstention.
I'm in big trouble this week.
Did we vote? The rest of us? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, four with one abstention. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee dated April 13th, 2017.
Is it second?
Second.
That's all right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any abstention or negative vote? None. unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee dated April 20th, 2017.
Second.
Okay. Any corrections or discussion?
You and Sal.
Yeah, you and Sal.
About, yeah. I don't remember what that was all about, but that's okay.
It was a quick one.
Yeah.
Before the tri-board meeting.
Oh, that, yeah, that was just a.
Oh, yeah.
School committee meeting.
Well, we had to post it as a school committee meeting to approve a trip, so we did it right before the tri-board meeting.
All right.
So it was real, it was quick. We opened the meeting, we approved the field trip and then we closed.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Abstentions? Two. So it's three ayes and two abstaining.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes, regular school committee, April 25th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any negative vote or abstention?
Abstention.
Yes. One abstention, four positive votes and one abstention.
That's it, Mr. Chairman, public comments.
Okay. Very good. By the way, the minutes have been very good. I mean, we haven't, we haven't had to, haven't had to make any significant changes and I'm sure, you know, we've been lucky. The dangers will get to the point where we're all luck because you're so good.
Oh, that's, that's okay, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. This is the time for public comments or input. If you'd like to speak to us, that's fine. Would you please, if you come up, give us your name and address for the secretary? Anyone like to speak at this time?
My name is Donna Newcomb, 16 Janet Road. Where's that town meeting?
Nope, that's your.
That's okay, okay. This is more of a public service announcement. Maura Healy is going to be at the Wang Middle School on, on the 22nd at 7:00. And I mention this because in doing a little bit of research, I found two grants that have gone by already, but I think that it might be worth us keeping an eye on going forward for these types of grants. And one was a youth opioid prevention grant and the other was access to mental health services grant program. Both, in both cases, public schools were eligible. They were usually limited to a two-year period, but they could be used for salaries. They said fringe, curriculum, all of these kinds of things. So I know that we're trying to get, you know, mental health services, social workers in place, but I'm just trying to think outside the box a little bit and, you know, maybe some of these grants might help bridge, you know, the gap between now and when it is that we can put those services in place. But anyway, she'll be there.
What are the date and time again?
Sure. May 22nd, 7:00, at the Wang Middle School. And I know that, I know that she's been very active in the issues around opioid abuse and treatment. And I think that, you know, we certainly, as a school system, can make a compelling argument for the fact that we don't have social workers and that prevention is as necessary as a cure and treatment and that, you know, maybe working with DESI, that something could be put in place where, you know, funding would be available for, you know, this, this type of position in the public schools that don't already have social workers. So.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this?
Hello, I'm Hannah Barker from Newtown Way. I have a couple of different things that I wanted to bring forward for your consideration. One of my, you won't be surprised with this one. One of my greatest concerns is still the lack of coordinators. We're down three now. I've discussed this with some of you already, but I want to keep it up on the agenda as I, I don't feel like we've solved this problem. We've been without several coordinators for as long as three years. This is costing us in terms of the quality of education that we're providing for our students and support for staff. Waiting for funding, as we have been doing for a couple of years, is, is just not a solution. It hasn't worked yet. And the current model, if we were fully staffed, requires more than $1 million in salaries. That's not happening. So I think it's time to reframe the question and consider how can we support all of our students and teachers and cover all of our disciplines within the current coordination budget of $850,000. I don't have an answer, but I think if more money is not coming and we can't find that in our own budget, then we need to stop neglecting the two subjects of science and English. I know people are trying to cover that, but that's not fair to them, too. They have full-time jobs and those are really two full-time jobs. So I'm asking that we, I don't know, as Donna mentioned, maybe think out of the box and what can we achieve with the budget that we do have. To move in a slightly different direction, I'd asked this question previously and I don't know if I missed it, but I want to keep that out there as well, is that I was made aware that, you know, when we're looking at the budgets, there's a separate budget for funds that don't come from the town and it's my understanding that's the funds that the district raises. So like the bus fees, the activity fees, and so I don't know if there's, you know, a thing like the budget report that comes out, but I don't want to miss that when it comes out. So if it doesn't exist, I'd love to see one and if it does come out, I hope not to miss it, but I think that's an important part of the budget.
Those are revolving accounts, aren't they? Yeah.
Yeah, like money that doesn't come from the town, but we use to do.
They're put into separate revolving accounts.
Right. But to me, there should be like a nice thing like we've got for the other budgets on that. The next thing, I have a comment on the comments. And clearly, I appreciate being able to come before you guys on a regular basis to ask questions and share concerns, although as some of the recent issues have brought up, it's really hard to ask questions and comment on topics that haven't happened in the meeting yet. So for example, this evening, Mr. Belansky is going to give a presentation and I will probably have a whole bunch of questions out of that. And because I don't know what to ask now, because I don't know anything about it, I can't ask until the next meeting. And then Mr. Belansky won't be there and you guys will have to field the questions. So I'm just putting that out there. I realize we're trying to keep the meetings moving and, you know, things that drag on internably are really awful to sit through, but maybe there's a happy medium around certain topics. Maybe people can write down questions and they can be vetted to see if that's something you want to address during the meeting. But that is a little frustrating when the item you're trying to comment on falls later on the meeting and if you didn't know enough about it, it's really hard to be here commenting Then I know that in Mike's last meeting, he was dealing with the policies, the fiscal management and non-instruction operations, policy 4304, and the student funding, fundraising 6309. And I guess I, I was coming to say, did I miss that, too? And, and it's my understanding, and I might not be reading these properly, but the policy explained that, that you were concerned that students not be exploited by the fundraising process. And I think it's really critical to protect the district as well. You know, there's a lot of online fundraising going on that are run independently by staff members in the district and I think that kind of falls in a funny place in that they're doing it of their own volition. It's not necessarily something that's directed by the district, but then parents are, and anyone really out there can donate money to these. And then what happens to it? So at least in some digging around that I did, because a lot of them are GoFundMes, GoFundMe will issue checks directly to the school district. So a staff person can start a fundraiser, get it all going, and then, as I think has been happening to date, it goes into their personal account and then they have to disperse funds. And as a parent who's been happy to contribute to these, sometimes I wonder where it all went. So I, I don't know if it's appropriate for more direction to go in the policy section, but I think that's an area we have to be aware of and find some way to manage, manage that. And, and if, for fundraising, it'd be really great if there, again, could be transparency. Here's what we got and here's what we did with it and it's not an exact science. So either we were short by X or we were over by X and here's what we did with it. Lastly, I have two invitations. The Chelmsford Community Read-In is finally going to happen the last week of May and we appreciate all the work Dr. Hurst did to help us find a new date and, and to allow schools to participate, so I can pass these around. It's the same website that Ginger set up, but it's got a new URL. So I think if you use the old one, you will still go there, but it'd be awesome if you guys are all invited to sign up. Former teachers love to see you in the classroom and everyone else is, is very, very welcome to participate and we would appreciate that. There's also, you've probably heard it mentioned by a couple of people, South Row has an engineering day. It's coming up on May 31st and any one here, the school committee is invited to come down and watch how they do that. You've heard from Celine Gribben earlier. She helped start this at South Row. She has got a wonderful assortment of activities that are geared towards fundamental topics in science and the kids just have an awesome time with it. So they'll be actively doing things from 10 to 11:45 on the 31st and from 12:25 until 3:10. So everybody's, well, anybody's curious, step in, see what it's all about and they would love to have you there.
Yeah, Nick, can you give us the title of that South Row event one more time?
It's, it's Engineering Day.
Engineering.
I don't know if they have a fancier one and there might be a flyer around that I can forward, but it's a, it's a PTO-sponsored event. They get a crew of parents to come in and I, I know they used to drop eggs off the roof. I don't know if they're still allowed to do that, but it's all kinds of really fun things to get kids excited about the possibilities in science. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee?
Maria Santos. I'm at 19 Parker Street, right around the corner, so I come easily to these meetings. You're just going to love it. I want to thank you, first of all, for having it at 6:00. I know the reason was because in between the last meeting and this meeting, some of us emailed and requested that we have more ability to provide public input whenever possible, especially on items like the budget items that were discussed and that I talked about at the last meeting and that are still concern to people. Today, we have on the agenda, Mr. Belansky. I'm really looking forward to the update on that report because I really think that one of the things that has not been considered carefully and I would ask this committee to really think about it and to ask questions on it, are the reports that are being given on these projects. It is totally illegal against the law, 40B, all these project laws, to deny a project based on the fact that there's going to be a fiscal impact, especially on the schools. But when you see things on these reports like, you know, we're going to have more busing and a hu, a greater busing cost, but Chelmsford has a $200 fee. Well, what if those people don't pay the $200 fee? Then what's the impact of another 40 students on the system? Really need to think about and consider the costs and go back to the town. And if they're approving these projects, and, and I'm not saying that they're bad things, they're good things. Housing is a top priority and good housing for many folks. But I think it's important to consider that the cost on the school system should be something that the town takes into consideration in addition to what our current budget is for the system and the greater impact that it's going to have. In addition to that, the numbers are not known factors. We have possibilities of what's going to be coming. And we saw what happened at the Byham School District this particular year. I think down the road, and I have a bet going on here for a few coffees, that it's going to be a greater impact than what the committee and has voted into this budget. And when that happens, then what are you going to do in the middle of a school year? If you have class sizes that are in excess of 25 in a middle school, the impact is great. If you have, at, at the high school, I hate to see that math position go away, absolutely hate to see it. And there are many people who feel exactly the same way. These are specialists, folks that you really can't get back into positions that need to continue, to update themselves all the time and that we definitely don't want to lose to the private sector, especially where the economy is today and in finding great people in the STEM fields. So I'm just going to throw it out there at you. Please have the public input sessions. If you're going to do something on budget, have a vote on it. Allow people, one more meeting to comment because as Hannah said, these wonderful times at the beginning of the meeting, but there's no give and take and no opportunity at all to comment on something that's happening during the meeting. So what am I going to do with Mr. Belansky's report? If I see something that catches my eye, I'm going to email you. Wonderful thing, isn't it? But, you know, I don't want to just be throwing out their comments and wasting your time. This is your commitment, is the public meetings. It's the time for, maybe you can rethink the session. Have a beginning and end type of comment period if you can. And being a member of boards myself, I understand it's nice to cut it off at some legitimate hour or good hour in the end of the evening. So thank you again. I do want to thank Dr. Lang. He responded very openly to having a bunch of us come in and talk to him and he explained the decisions that he had made and why those decisions were made. The numbers do tend to not look like they need to keep those positions at this time in the middle school, but I'm not conceding that because I honestly think that during the school year, there's going to be a greater impact and the greater impact might be at Parker where you have absolutely no ability to send in an additional team to that school because there's no space. So what are we going to be doing? Is it something that we're going to look for, correct during the school year and get a redistricting type of thing going on so that we can correct this for next year? It's, it's whatever you're going to do. You need to really think about it and what the impact is going to be over the course of this year on the schools. If there's no space there and the only space is at McCarthy, then that might be where the team is. If not, and you can find the space at Parker, send the team there. But you've got to consider the class size and the process. This is my thoughts. I want to thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for moving it to the six o'clock slot. Thank you.
Well, I don't deserve the credit because I didn't do it, so thank you very much.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I didn't do it, so thank you.
Okay. Whoever did move it to six o'clock, thank you very much.
I'd just like to, we don't normally comment on all the items, just so that's clear, but I just want all of you who have spoken to know that all of these topics are things that either things that we're currently dealing with or we have on the list. So there is an impact. Just because we don't do anything right now, it doesn't mean we're not on top of some of these things. So thank all of you that spoke.
Great, thank you.
See you Wednesday.
Anyone else?
Is it okay if I just touch on a couple of things?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Again, I know we don't typically respond to, to comments, but a couple of things that Hannah actually brought up that I just have some quick answers to that I, I think could help frame the discussion. At Mike Regney's last school committee meeting, he did bring forward some policies for us to review and we're currently doing that. All school districts, including us, are dealing with kind of an onslaught of the social media kind of fundraising, different campaign sites like a GoFundMe and there are other ones that are out there. And, you know, this, this wasn't around five years ago. So school systems are trying to figure out exactly how to deal with those funds, not only to kind of approve of the fundraiser themselves, but be able to properly, you know, account for the funding where it's coming through a website as opposed to just like a cash or a check donation. So Mike did bring forward some policies for us to review. We've reached out to other school systems that have already developed policies, do not start from scratch, to take a look at theirs. And then I do anticipate us actually working, you know, over the summer more likely, to bring forward some policy recommendations around that so that we can start the next school year, all on the same page, as far as that's going. Another thing that had actually come up in one of our subcommittee meetings is there was just so much student fundraising out there. How do we know it's actually really kind of authorized by the schools and how much this might be individuals, the clubs of sports, or what could be unauthorized? So ways to actually help the public if they have someone that comes to their door, you know, claiming to sell candy bars, how do we know it's a legitimate fundraiser? So we're actually looking at it. A couple of districts have opened up little sites on their website, on the webpage that actually kind of lists like district sanctioned events so that you know if someone comes to your neighborhood selling a ticket or whatnot, you can look and see if it's, if it's legitimate. So there are a number of different things we're looking at and I do think we'll actually have some better protocols and procedures in place for the start of the next school year. Just some of this stuff comes up and we just haven't had to deal with it in the past. So I did want to at least reach out to you and let you know that it is ongoing. You didn't miss anything. He brought it up that night and more of the work is being done behind the scenes and I expect some recommendations going to the policy subcommittee more likely over the, the summer. And I think that also then touches on your, kind of your comment about fundraising and transparency and tracking funds. We can incorporate that all in the, in the same response and have a conversation during the summer about that. So I just want to let you know we are working on it. It's not that we're not, we just don't have a firm position on it yet.
Yeah, we did a search while we were at a policy subcommittee meeting and there were a number of fundraising, you know, going on. And I was really shocked to see that there was a GoFundMe page for my son.
Oh, yeah.
Set up for, by his best friend. Of course, there was no money contributed.
Yeah. I don't know why.
Yeah, neither. I know.
It's very complex. Just to add on quick thing because some of the requests that individual teachers have made have to do with technology and they may not fit with our technology needs at all. And there's a question of how the stuff is going to be maintained. So they are, as you've already heard, complex issues and thanks for keeping them on, on top of our agenda. Okay. Student news.
Ah, that's us. Ah, okay. So the first thing that has happened is the Deca Internationals happened in California.
Couple of weeks back, I believe.
Where was it? California, do you remember?
Anaheim.
Anaheim, that's the name. And so from the high school, we had Jill McKillop, who finished in the top 10 in food marketing. We had Jack O'Neil and Brian Tong, who got certificates of excellence at the internationals, which was great for all three of them. Jill and Jack are both graduating with us this year and Brian's a junior, upcoming senior.
And then obviously the mock car crash happened the other day and that was put on by Live Smart and the Health Department along with the help of Mrs. Dua Osomoa. And that was just a great impact. I thought it really touched a lot of people.
It does, every year.
Yeah. And I personally seen my classmates and it really, you know, made me step back and say, wow, this is real, this is serious. So that was just, that was just a wonderful thing that happened.
And we had Dean Lyons and Dean Black.
Yep.
I believe both of them spoke about personal experiences with the issues of drunk driving and the consequences that you face. And they both just really, both cheered up on stage. I don't know if they want me saying that. They're not a dry eye in the pack. It's for, yeah, all of the upperclassmen were taken back by it.
Yeah, it was kind of a tough day after that. It was really kind of mellow.
Oh, definitely. Yeah.
But yeah, that was an awesome thing put on by the Health Department, so.
Yeah. It is every year. There's a spring concert on Wednesday, this Wednesday. There's a spring concert on Wednesday, this Wednesday. I believe it's their last concert, I think. It's their final concert. All chorus, band, and orchestra, all three will be performing in the pack at seven?
Seven P.M.
Seven P.M., yeah.
And last night was World Language Honors induction. That was also at the pack at seven o'clock and I believe that was all the foreign languages.
There were a lot. I've heard there were a lot of kids that were inducted, so that's exciting. Thursday night at seven P.M. is the awards night, student awards night in the pack this Thursday for, I think it's for juniors and seniors, both.
Primarily seniors, I believe.
Mostly seniors, but I think juniors do attend when they're asked to, yeah.
Also, last day for seniors is this Friday, the nineteenth. So sad, you know, which is a half day.
We're very upset.
Exactly. It's weird. It's kind of strange to see the time, you know, it went by so fast.
It really did. It, it did.
And next week is on the twenty-second, that's the Town of Chelmsford Scholarship in the pack.
At seven P.M.
I believe at seven P.M. And then the CHS Alumni Association Scholarship.
As Mr. Simonian invited all of us to, at seven thirty, twenty-seventh, twenty-third.
Also in the pack, so that's back to back.
Mm-hmm. The twenty-fifth, which I think is Thursday, next Thursday at seven P.M. is the All-Town Wind Ensemble. Concert.
Grades five through twelve, so that's everybody. And scholarship, yeah, they're also giving out a scholarship, I believe, too.
And then next Friday is the Dance Team Dance Rehearsal at CHS in the pack at seven P.M., I believe, also.
Yeah, and they practice throughout the year. They really help with the senior skits.
Senior skit.
They helped me somewhat do the white man dance. It wasn't too good, but you know, they helped me out just a little bit.
They did what they could. Yeah, so they're, they're amazing. They're a great dance team. They're all-year-round club, so.
Yeah, just if I could comment, when I was principal, a couple of kids came to me and said, we'd like to have a dance team. And I said, yeah, right. So the philosophy has been to let things run, to see what will last and what won't. And this is an example where the kids just took off and did great things, so. We should keep that open, openness because you never know what's gonna happen. And this was a great, great thing that I was skeptical about, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, they help with Mr. CHS. They do pep rally.
Job.
They're very, very involved in some of the biggest things that the high school puts on. So that was a good call on your part. Good job for it.
Well, sometimes you blunder into things.
Yeah, that's all that happens at Chelmsford High School.
I'm gonna miss frickin' track.
You guys thought about the prom, you graduate.
Ah, that's.
Forget about that, I don't know.
That's in a while, we've got time.
Graduation, six P.M.
Six P.M., Songas Center, June third.
Thank you.
Saturday.
Be there.
Be there.
I'd like to invite the two of you to come forward because this is your last official appearance.
Thank you.
You get the pink, baby.
You should have worn a pink today.
Those of you who have followed our meetings know that these two have been exceptionally loyal. Not only have they come in and given us news as to what's going on at the high school, but they stayed in many cases. I mean, some nights we almost had to tell them, why don't you leave?
I always said that to them.
But the other thing that's happened, I think, and I think it's a good trend, on a couple of occasions particularly, they, they volunteered to, to share their thoughts with us. And that's really why we want to have students here. And hopefully whoever's coming in to take your, nobody can take your place.
Thank you.
But hopefully they'll understand, you know, you can do that. You're not just here to add beauty to this collection. You've done an outstanding job and we wanted to take a moment to, to recognize you. And one thing, you know, I'm sorry that, you know, the, the day on the hill didn't work out as well for you. Because it's a, it's a great day and it just, it wasn't good for, for our situation either, so. All of us, we should be very best and because you're such bubbly, wonderful, intelligent people, we know you'll do well.
Thank you very much.
I know.
You did it. Good job, guys.
Good news?
Yeah, hold please. Shoot us down. Here we go. Oh, went back. Okay, so this year is the first year that our middle school students will be participating in the Knowledge Bowl that is sponsored by the Lowell Sun. So we have two staff members from each of our middle schools and also five students from each of the two middle schools that are combining into one team. So they're very excited. This, they, they don't know, we're asking them questions every time we see them. So if you see any of these students, you have to ask them a lot of questions. I hear Lowell kind of takes the prize a lot, so we'll see how that goes for them.
It's the Lowell Sun.
So the two dates are going to be, yeah, we'll see how it goes, June twelfth and June thirteenth. So they'll be participating on those days, so we're very excited. The second piece of good news is two of our English teachers, Dawn Aboussad and Stina Caberud, they, I'm gonna use the word senior a lot, so they host a senior book club with two of their senior classes at the Chelmsford Senior Center. You were one of them.
Oh, yeah, well, they came to the high school.
And they came to the high school? Okay, I was told they went to the.
The Life of Pi.
Yeah, so they read the book, The Life of Pi, and they ran it like a book club. So that was a nice connection for those students and even for those teachers. So we're happy that you guys had that opportunity. And that's it for good news.
Oh, I wanted to, I remember, I wanted to give a shout out to one of our Plus Block members, Darian Rivera. He recently got the Lyons Arc.
Oh, that's right.
Well, he didn't get the scholarship, but he's the one that wrote about him. They wrote about him. So he received, they gave him a whole laundry basket of dorm supplies and stuff to help him. He must, well, he really deserved it. We were all so happy. They brought us the whole Plus Block donuts and munchkins and.
Yeah, it was an awesome time. It was pretty cool. It was a pretty cool celebration.
Yeah, it was, it was good.
There were so many things going on. I'd just like to add a couple. And, and by the way, if any of the rest of you are aware of a situation where we should, you know, should feel free to, to add, but if you didn't see it on social media, the Theater Guild, twenty-six Tammy nominations. I don't think there are many categories more than the twenty-six. I mean, they always receive a large number, but this is far into the woods and obviously the judges really liked it. Also in the arts, Teresa Karangis, who's one of our art teachers, was named the Outstanding Art Educator, Educator in Visual Arts by the Marble Collection Publishers. So, you know, the, the accolades continue to roll in for staff as, as you just heard with the English teachers.
Karangis, you said?
Yes, yes.
And then another thing that I didn't, hadn't seen before, the Trouble Choir got a gold medal at the recent Massachusetts Instrumentalist and Coral Conductors Festival. So, you know, you know, it's hard to, to keep up, but we try because there are so many great things. And if we miss things, it's not because, you know, we don't care. We really care. That's why we take the time to do these things.
Einart sends good news every day. I mean, they're amazing.
And we'll just throw it in so that the athletes don't feel badly. Sometimes we focus too much on them with the, the teams this spring. Almost across the board have competed very successfully and most of them will be in tournaments, I think, so.
Good for them.
So it's been a, it's been a good spring and get the seniors through the senior week, cap it all off. It'll be great. Okay, new business.
Thank you. We're gonna skip the, the first item for right now because that group will be joining us at about seven o'clock or so. So if we skipped to number two, I'd like to invite Evan Valansky, the Community Development Director up. And I provided in your package just a slide that had been previously presented to the town meeting. They talked about some of the affordable housing projects that are ongoing in the community. Some have been approved, under construction, various phases. And one of the things you do know is we've put the budget together for this year and we started doing some of our long-range planning around enrollment. Just trying to get a sense of all the different developments that are out there and what's on the horizon, just so that we can plan accordingly for all of our different schools. Wanted to have that discussion. And I think Barbara, actually the previous meeting, had mentioned bringing some people in to talk about it. So I reached out to Evan and he was gracious enough to come, so I very much appreciate you coming. And didn't know if we could just have a little discussion about kind of where, where things are with housing in Chelmsford, what you see kind of happening right now and what's on the horizon. That particularly from a school perspective, we need to be particularly careful for in the long term. I'm, I'm sorry, the short term. Obviously, if you know long term, that's great as well. But, you know, what's gonna really happen over the next one to five years, just to kind of inform our decision-making perhaps more than, than we have. So I appreciate you coming tonight and would love to just kind of hear from you as to what's, what's happening.
Sure. So, good evening, thank you. So the list that's in front of you that was presented to town meeting is what's going on right here, right now, is the projects that we're aware of. Some have been approved, some have, have met with myself and other town boards and committees. And some are kind of in the pipeline, so to speak. I, I would say this is a pretty good representation of what would be potentially built within the next two to three years. And then the ones that are in the pipeline, presumably if the economy remains strong, could be under construction, you know, three to, three to five years out. Some of these projects are, are on vacant land. There's not much vacant land left. The two on the bottom, UMass West Campus and, and Groton Road, are sizable acreage and potentially sizable projects. Remains to be seen if those, you know, will come to fruition, if they're viable or not. So I'm more than happy to have an open discussion. I'm not exactly sure what your particular interest may be. You just fire, fire away.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
Evan, is there a formula you use to determine how many students will move into? I'm assuming it has to do with the number of bedrooms in a unit. And you have so many units, but it doesn't say how many bedrooms are in each unit. So let's say there's, you know, a half are three-bedroom units. How many students? What's the formula?
Yeah, so most, very rarely is there a project that has a substantial number of three bedrooms. State law requires ten percent.
Okay.
So that's typically what, what we'll see. There's no town or, there's no town committee or individual advocating for more than the, the state minimum. So that's kind of a, that's a constant. That's probably one of the few constants that's across the board. So the three bedrooms is really pretty predictable. Unless it's an ownership townhouse, and some of the projects that are on this list, the smaller ones, will fall into that category. And townhouses, you know, are likely minimum two bedrooms, if not three bedrooms, or a two-bedroom with a conversion of a third, you know, a den into a bedroom. But they're, they're the minority of the projects. So generally speaking, there is no one formula. I mean, the town, the town essentially reviews projects that are proposed. And the bedroom split, you know, can range from a third one-bedrooms, two-thirds two-bedrooms. Sometimes it's flipped depending on strategy that the particular developer has in mind. So some of the critical factors that would determine impacts of schools, you know, generation of school-aged children are the unit mix and the sizes of the units, whether it's rental versus ownership. The location in town plays a huge role, as well as onsite amenities. Whether it has a pool, whether it has taught lots of playgrounds, whether the buildings have elevators or not. All of these, all of these factors are factors that people making a decision, particularly if they either have children or are planning on having children in a, in a one to five-year period, will use to evaluate where they want to, where they want to live.
The proposed development at Cushing Place in the center?
Yep.
Is that fifty-five and over?
No, so none of the projects on this list are, are age restricted. Chelmsford's probably one of the few communities that doesn't really play that game. We, we do have some senior overlay zoning. Project hasn't been built for over a decade using those overlays. So again, they're usually proposed as unrestricted and they're usually approved that way. So I mean, Cushing Place is, is a good example of the particulars of a project. That's right in the center. It's luxury housing, rents that are higher than typical market rate in Chelmsford. And there's no family-friendly amenities. So based upon those factors, highly unlikely that families would be targeting that development with the, with the specific intent of raising children there. A lot of these projects, what, what you'll, what you'll find is that, and I think that the hope and desire is that new families move to Chelmsford. And in doing so, many of them aren't necessarily from the area and they'll choose to rent for a period of time to figure out what neighborhood they want to live in, what's, what school, what elementary school neighborhood they want to, they want to live in. So while a young couple may move into an apartment and not have a, a child in year one, they may have a child in year two, three, or four, but it's not a school-aged child. And theoretically, they would figure out where they want to live. They purchase a, a single-family home and, in year, you know, three, four, or five, and then they would enter their children into the school system.
I'm not familiar with the Gorham Street project. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, so that one is just, it's just into the pipeline, as it indicates here. It was submitted to mass housing. So that is right on the lower line. It's the last house on the, the last property on the left after you go over the, the highway bridge.
Okay.
It's proposed as fifty-six townhouse rentals. It's a very unique project for Chelmsford where it's rental, but it's a townhouse style. So that project will have a mix of one-twos and threes. And so the projects that are proposed, very often what is ultimately approved isn't necessarily exactly what the developer proposes from, from the get-go. There's an opportunity within either the, the zoning board forty-B process or the planning board process to have a discussion. And that discussion usually results in some, some modifications to the project.
I know it would be, first of all, Ev, I know how hard this is and to keep track of this development. And Barbara is right. There is a formula that's based on studio, one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, one-bedroom with a den, two-bedrooms with lofts. Just about anything you can imagine is actually put out by Nezdeck. And I do have some experience in this, so although Ev probably isn't, you know, looking at Nezdeck because there's no reason for Ev to follow Nezdeck, maybe we could provide him, Mr. Chairman, with that formula that Nezdeck uses too. And Nezdeck, everybody knows what Nezdeck is. It's, you know, put out by Harvard, put in the forties to support schools. And with advice, and one of the things that they do is put this formula together to exactly explain what the number of kids, I mean, it's, it's a science.
Right.
They have an exact formula. Although there is some, you know, there could be some hiccups along the way. I think Ev clearly articulated when you start talking amenities, they even have a category that has amenities and don't have amenities. Maybe in the future, we could, you know, just at least provide Evan with it and, you know, back-of-the-envelope math, it's really easy to put together.
Sure, so I'm, I'm aware of what Chelmsford units generate. So back in two thousand nine.
We're looking at this number, seven, say seven eighty-eight, use the lower end.
Yep.
How many students do you anticipate?
Okay, so at the, at, at a twenty percent generation, a hundred sixty units. So that's, that's, that's at the, the low end.
Hundred sixty children or units?
Hundred, hundred sixty children.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Based upon a, a point-two factor. At, at a point-four factor, three hundred twenty. So back in oh-nine, the town did commission a fiscal impact study of, of four previously approved fortyBs. One was at Kensington. The second was Three Sixty Courtyard, which I believe is the, the former drive-in. The third was Woodland Square, which is two sixty-two, two sixty-four Littleton Road. That's ownership townhouse. And Robin Hill Meadows, which is five to twenty-five Equestrian Lane. Those are single families.
Yep.
So to put this into perspective, the consultant indicates that town-wide, town-wide now for all fourteen thousand dwelling units in town, the school-age children per dwelling unit is point four-three. That's mostly single-family. Probably not a surprising number. For apartment-style multifamily, it averages at about point two-zero. So Robin Hill Meadows is, is one point nine-nine, single-family. Woodland Square was point eight-one. The Kensington was point nine-eight. In the Courtyard was point nine-four. So I, I'm not familiar with Nezdeck's formula for Chelmsford, but this is real data. And my guess is in two thousand nine, just to, just to give you some real numbers here, Kensington had a school enrollment of twenty-five children.
I drove by this morning at eight o'clock. I'm assuming it was the bus stop in front of Kensington. There seemed to be students there of more than one age group, so maybe middle school and high school and, or middle school and elementary school. There were quite a few students. I was shocked.
Were there more than twenty-five?
It was, I would say fifteen at the time, but that probably doesn't include high school because it was past the opening of high school.
I mean, the reason I ask is that, you know, it'd be good to know what the current number is.
Yeah. It was a big, it was a big bus stop.
My guess is it's not much more than twenty-five.
Okay.
You know, so in the low end, you know, that, that. You know, so in the low end, you know, that, that, that point-two, assuming all 800 units are built, generates 160 school-aged children. That's across the board, you know, pre-K to, to grade 12. You want to, if you want to go up to point, point-four, which is a single-family factor, 320.
Okay.
That, can I?
Sure.
That actually would be interesting, just if you do have that data from, it was in 2009, face the projection. We could actually go in and look at what the enrollment, if you give us like a property address, for say Kensington, we could go into the database and actually kind of call out the students that live at that address, just to get a total number of students enrolled in the district. Just to be able, over time, kind of see, based on a projection, what that is. Going forward, as far as Nezdeck was concerned, when we were doing that enrollment projection with them as part of this process, they had reached out and received a lot of this information about the, the projects that had been approved and, the projects that had been approved and what was on the horizon. The only two that I don't think were factored into the equation, or the bottom two, the UMass West Campus and the Groton Road one, because honestly, we just had no idea, you know, what, what that's going to mean in time. I'm not overly familiar with the Groton Road project. I guess the one that scares or concerns me the most is the, the UMass West Campus one, because it is a lot of, of area. And also, I just think about where that particular neighborhood feeds. It would most likely feed Harrington as an elementary school, which is already on the higher end of enrollment, you know, and then work its way to Parker. When do you, like, if something were to be developed at the UMass Lowell site, what do you think the timing, I'm not going to hold you to this. Like, what do you think the timing would be? And what would the process actually?
Initial indications is that that would likely be senior housing. So that's probably the, the only one on the, on the list. Right now, the town's in a planning process
Okay.
to determine whether the town is interested in acquiring that piece of property and for what use.
Okay.
That, that committee process is currently undergoing. They're expected to wrap up in August, September, with anticipation of going to Fall Town Meeting. But initial indications is for senior housing.
Senior housing, okay. I was just curious.
Just looking at these, I mean, of all the, there's only one under construction, so real short-term, next school year, do you see any impact on enrollment for next year? Based on the fact that only one of them's under construction at this point?
Sure, probably, probably every year, every calendar year. You'll have one, one under construction and one being occupied.
But, I mean, given this here, I mean, is this going to impact our enrollment for next year?
Sure. I mean, uh...
Which, what will be done by next, for the next school year?
So 10276 Mill Road is currently under construction. It usually takes a year, but they phase in occupancy, so...
Will they be open and ready for residence soon?
No, no, they'll be probably, you know, nine to 12 months out.
Okay, so really not going to impact next year's incoming, that's what my question. Which one of these is going to impact us for next year? And it's based on this, there's only one under construction, was my question.
Correct.
And we did look, because we saw the Mill Road one, and we also saw the Turnpike one. You know, probably affecting us more likely two years, two-plus, two, three years out. On an elementary level, that particular neighborhood, we do have capacity at South Row, which we would, most of the project would be mapped to South Row anyway. But what we would have to do, if, let's for argument's sake, say, one of those particular developments, based on the current map, were mapped to Center School. We know we don't have a lot of extra capacity at Center. We may need to bring a recommendation to the committee that would basically take a look at that specific development before it even comes online, and just indicate anyone who actually resides at that development would be mapped to South Row, or, what's the word I'm looking for? Zoned, I guess zoned to the South Row as opposed to, to Center. But, but as a whole group, we could do that. Then we could obviously arrange the transportation, so they were all going together. But we're looking out, you know, at least two to three years. That is the one coming online, but we know we have the capacity, particularly at that grade level. I just really didn't know, and these numbers were factored into the enrollment projection. It was the West Campus and then the Groton Road one. Again, I'm not that familiar with the Groton Road one. Can you talk a little bit about that one?
That one isn't, I'm not sure, it's, it hasn't really progressed into, into the pipeline. It's more conceptual in nature.
Okay.
So...
Respectfully speaking, I think it's really important that we continue to get as much information about these developments to you and the superintendent, because there's, there's an elephant in the room, and the elephant is special ed, because we have so much housing. If this is an impact, because people want to move into our community, and it impacts special ed, well, one or two or three kids could send us right back to town meeting and putting, putting our superintendent or this budget really in some challenging situations. So I think that's why it's so important that we understand this, so we can appropriately plan and articulate to the town in the event that special ed is affected, because, you know, that could be in the hundreds of thousands, just one child. So that's why it's so important for us, and I hope you see that.
Yeah, and that may be another good data point. If you're able to identify per project, you know, certainly a number of school-aged children, what grade they're in, and if you're able to get to a level of detail related to special education designation, that may be able to help us massage projects as they come through, based upon the different levers related to those, those factors that have a direct, a kind of impact to the potential to generate school-aged children. So that's information that, I mean, I just, I don't have...
I think for starters, if we looked at those four projects you mentioned earlier, as far as the 2009 data, and just based on students, regardless of what type of student they are, just to take a look at what the actual, say, Kensington, what the population we're actually serving today is, what the grade span is, just to get a sense of exactly what the projection and the thought at the time was, and then what the reality is, you know, five, five, six years later. So that is something that we can work on.
Right.
And Evan is excellent, just want to put it out there. Anytime these different developments are in the pipeline, he does kind of forward me an email and just give me a heads-up that this is being considered by the board, or this potentially might move forward. I think I forwarded a couple to you to just kind of flag for discussion or kind of hearing in the community what's going on. So we'll obviously keep that line of communication open. And the other thing that we, I think I mentioned at a previous school committee meeting, the other thing that we have the ability to do is annually update our enrollment projection with Nezdeck. So we take this data about housing developments that are on the horizon. We feed that to Nezdeck, and then they give us an annual updated enrollment projection. So they take a look at our actual enrollments in classrooms. They take a look at any new development work that could be coming on the horizon, and they provide us with a new, a new projection. And so, you know, we only started that last year, but we'll be able to actually take those projections. And after we get, you know, three, four, or five years' worth of data, we can see how accurate they're actually projecting, and see if we need to make any additional variances in the projections based on what we're seeing in real time, based on what they're projecting, and how good their projection is. So, so we will continue to work with that. But Evan is excellent at giving us the information to at least flag for us what type of developments are on the horizon.
You know, aside from new construction, you know, for fun, I like to look at the Chapter 70 numbers on surrounding communities, just to make myself really frustrated. And Westford has 20,000 approximately residents in town. Chelmsford has 30,000. We have almost identical enrollment in schools. We have an additional 10,000 people who are probably empty nesters, who are going to be selling their single-family residence, and they're not selling them to other empty nesters. Right? That's a lot of housing.
Agreed.
So that's, that's a number that never gets kicked around.
The socioeconomics and demographics of the community are going to change significantly over the next 10, 15 years. It's an aging, it's an aging and graying community.
Yep.
And in Chelmsford, 35 percent of the, of the households remain in their home for over 35 years. That's much higher than the state average. So people who move to Chelmsford don't, don't leave. And they don't, they don't leave their single-family homes until they absolutely need to. So, but I think we're getting, as the, as the years go by, that segment of the population that's an empty nester and aging out. Yeah, they will be, there will be significant turnover in that housing stock, and likely be filled with young professionals who are looking to settle down and raise a family.
And maybe those empty nesters are moving into the apartments that are being built.
Will certainly be moving into the, the single-family homes as they come up for sale.
The empty nesters, I don't think are going to move into single families.
No, 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 no.
They're going to sell, right, but they might relocate within Chelmsford.
Correct. So I understand, I mean, there's pressures on, on kind of two legs. Single-family homes changing over, and then the, and then the multifamily.
Thank you.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Because I'm not that, that familiar with it. But when you look at like, Chelmsford as a community, you talk about like, well, how built-out is it? You know, how much available space is there for still future growth? Do you, can you give us just a little bit of a perspective on, on that? I really don't have any...
Yeah, so that's more of a, it's more of a policy discussion. So I don't set policy. I, I help the town implement policy. So the, the planning board, who are the chief elected planners in Chelmsford, there's seven, seven of your peers, they're the planners in town. They did a master plan in 2010, or are just about to begin the process of updating that master plan. So that master plan articulated the town's kind of guiding principles towards land use, growth management, housing, economic development, open space. And essentially was, tried to create a balanced approach, but focus on redevelopment. So then, over the last five to seven years, significant rezoning has been put in place to implement those, those goals and objectives, much of, much of which you'll see as part of these, these projects that are being proposed. The cycle of development is endless. Unless and until the town, or an entity in the town such as Waters or Say-so. But under zoning, it's, it's an endless cycle. Properties usually have a lifespan of about, you know, 30 to 40 years. So, there's lots of first-generation properties in Chelmsford, particularly in commercial districts in Chelmsford, that have reached their life, their life expectancy. For whatever reason, I mean, the market's pretty, speaking pretty clearly that the market sees Chelmsford as a great residential investment, and not so much as a commercial investment. So I think strategically, the, the hope and desire is that if you have an influx of new renters in town, not, not single-family homeowners, but renters in town, which typically are in a certain socio-economic segment, that that changes the socio-economics of the town, town-wide, and then would hopefully spur a commercial investment. But the market, the market's very clear at this point. Chelmsford's strength has always been a bedroom community, and the market continues, continues to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ev.
Great.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Again, on behalf of the committee, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we're going to go flip back to the first presentation. So we'll invite Laurie McDermott to come on forward. This is a spotlight on the departments, and Laurie coordinates the Reading, English Language Arts, and Title I programs for us. So welcome Laurie, and some of her colleagues and students tonight. So we'll turn it over to you.
Hi, thank you so much for having me back. So last year, when I was here, I focused on giving you an overview of the Reading program, the Title I program, and the ELL program. One of the things I didn't really talk about, for lack of time, was the writing. So I brought Donna Murray with me, who is our elementary district writing coach. So she goes into the classrooms and supports the teachers and the students. And so the reason this came to be is because when the new standards for Massachusetts were adopted, one of the, in ELA, one of the biggest changes was around writing for our elementary students. So in the past, we had really focused on personal narrative. You guys might remember writing a lot of personal narratives. You know, students writing about their own lives, and children love that. So when the new standards came out, then we now were faced with teaching very young children, starting in kindergarten, about not just personal narrative, but also creative narrative writing, and expository or informative writing, and opinion writing. And so when it all first started, you know, as teachers, we were very nervous and feeling like, wow, how can these little kids do this? And how are we going to find the time for this writing? So Donna has been instrumental in helping teachers write, you know, on the, on the ground floor to incorporate this writing instruction, incorporate these standards into the content that we already have, into our science content, into our social studies, and into our reading, so that it's not this separate thing that we do that we write. But we're writing when we're reading. We're writing when we're studying science, and we're writing when we're studying social studies. So then I thought, what better way to show you this writing than to invite some friendly students along? So we have a couple of second graders from Byham, and a couple of fourth graders from Center School, who were willing to come here on this beautiful night, and I'm sure their parents will take them to get something special when they're all done. Maybe a little Sully's or something, if I can put a little plug in.
My friends at Sullivan's would appreciate it.
Might be on me now. So, we're going to invite them up to share their writing. I believe we have a creative narrative, which is pretty cool. We have a how-to. We have another narrative, and I believe we have...
Creative narrative.
Yeah, I think another creative narrative at an upper level. So you'll get a nice sampling. Let's start, we can, next slide. Let's start with Bryce. He's a second grader, Bryce Baker, from Byham School. He's in Lisa Thomas Boyle's class, and he's going to it to us.
One day, me, my dad, my sister, and my mom woke up. My dad woke me up very early. I asked him where we were going, but he didn't tell me. We took three airplanes together. At the third station, my dad gave me a watch that looked like Mickey Mouse. I thought to myself, are we going to Disney? My dad spoke. I thought to my, wait, um, he said, guys, it turns out we're going to Disney World. My sister and I jumped for joy. Yay, we're going to Disney World, we shouted. When we got there, it was night. My sister and I were very disappointed. The next day, we ate popcorn and went on three roller coasters. In one of them, the eight broke the track and sent us flying backwards. That day, we went to the water park and got our face painted. I was a tiger and my sister was a butterfly. I thought I looked really cool. We went on a merry-go-round and got some cotton candy. That night, I watched Mary Poppins on a big screen outside. When the movie was done, I ate dinner at a restaurant. Dinner was delicious. After that, I went home to our hotel and, um, and watched Tom and Jerry. The next couple of days at Disney, I went to Cinderella's castle, went on a Mickey ride, and I was feeling pretty tired. The next day, the, the next day, we went on our Disney cruise for four nights. There were a kids', there was a kids' club next to the restaurant we ate for for dinner. In the, in the kids' club, there were computers, televisions, forts, and a bunch of beanbags. The crew sailed to a water park and a zoo. The water park was huge, so was the water jungle. On the last day, when we were, when we were on the plane, I was grateful for the seven days at Disney World. I hope we can go there again sometime.
Great job.
So, I just want to point it, you can sit back down. I just wanted to point out that you probably noticed the vocabulary in Bryce's writing, the strong beginning, middle, and end, how I felt like I got to go on the trip with you, even though I wasn't invited. That was amazing. I felt like I got to experience all of that cool stuff, incredible details in there. Did you write that all at once?
Yeah.
All in one sitting, you sat down and wrote that all out?
Yeah.
Did you have to do any revisions or any edits, or anything like that?
Um, some of them.
Some of, some revisions, some changes?
Some of them, that I did on the Disney cruise, I didn't add any of that, but, um...
Okay, and then you changed it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, that's really awesome. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to invite Ryan Munson up to read for us, and he's got an expository how-to.
If you want to know how, if you want to know how to plant a garden, you've come to the right place. First, you can, you can go to the store and buy a shovel. Once you are done with that, you can go to Home Depot and buy seeds for the plants. You need a place to put the seeds in. You need a big space for the plants. With the shovel, dig holes for the seeds. Then when you put the seeds, and they need to be spread apart. Next, you need to cover the seeds in with dirt. After a while, you have to water the plants. You don't want to overwater, you don't want to overwater, or the plants will die. Then the sun needs to dry the water off. You, you should let it sit for a few days. You, you should let it sit for a few days. While you are doing that, you can build a fence so the animals don't come in. After that, you can put up a scarecrow, so the birds don't eat the plants. Be patient, and the plants will grow. Congratulations, you have your garden.
So Ryan, who do you think might want to read this type of writing? Why would somebody?
A person that likes to plant gardens.
Yeah, so that was like, super helpful for me, because I'm not the best gardener, and I have lots of animals around my yard that I need to keep out, so I learned that I could put a fence up, right? And that might help me. I might need to hold on to that and refer back a couple times, because I might forget some of those good ideas. Okay. Did you ever read any books that were how-tos, or how did you learn how to write a how-to?
So Mrs. Thomas Boyle read a book to us about how to plant a garden, and it was like, it was, um, how to plant a garden, and they planted a garden, and the girl didn't want, the girl didn't know that they were planting. The girl, the other guy, the other people, their neighbors planted a garden, and they were planting vegetables, so she wanted to plant a garden, and their, and she thought their vegetables looked ugly. So then they, so after a few days, they looked at their garden, and they saw, um, these beautiful, foods that they could eat. And then all the other neighbors came and looked at it, and they all had dinner together, and they ate the foods.
That's great. So did it help you to model your writing after hearing that story? Yeah, that's great. Okay, thanks, bud. Sarah, unfortunately, could not be with us because she had a conflict with a Brownie meeting. But Dr. Hersch and I are hoping to get out to see Sarah in her classroom, so that we can hear her piece, because she was very generous to volunteer her time. Those Brownie conflicts can, you understand. So we do have Hannah Jamelli from Center School, and she's going to read her creative narrative. Can you just tell the school committee a little bit about the difference between a creative narrative and a personal narrative? Do you remember?
Yes. A creative narrative can be made up from your imagination. It can be, it can be fantasy, but a personal narrative is about you. It's about a time that you've had, or something that you did.
Yeah, like the Disney World one.
Yes.
Okay, so yours is a creative narrative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The Snowflake Key. On Christmas Eve, my family and I lit our Christmas tree for the last time before we had to put it away. My name is Christine Shaw, and I absolutely love Christmas. I knew that putting our pine-sweet tree down would mean that Christmas time was already almost over, and saying goodbye to my favorite ornaments. My favorite ornament is a little silver key. I don't put that one away, though. I take it off the tree before my mom takes it and wear it as a necklace. Anyway, this is the story of how I found out this key's magic and how it took me on a magical adventure. When my parents went to put my little sister Stephanie to bed, I slipped the key off its branch and quickly ran upstairs and threw it in my jewelry box. The next day on Christmas, Stephanie and I ran downstairs, ready to tear open our presents from Santa. I almost forgot about the key. I did remember, though, and I wanted to put it on right away. "Mom," I called into the kitchen, "can I get ready early? I'm so excited to put on the new outfit I have." "Sure, Christy, don't be long, though, because I'm making a special Christmas breakfast." "Okay, Mom, I'll be back in five minutes." I raced upstairs. As I looked at my Christmas outfit, I wondered why Mom had never minded that I stole the key ornament from the tree. I know she's seen it on me before, just never mentioned it. Once I had my dress on, I delicately slipped the key over my head. The blue gems on the tip of the key sparkled in the winter sunlight through my bedroom window. "This key goes perfectly with my dress," I silently remarked to myself. My dress was a sparkly silver, along with a bright blue sweater that matched my blue high, my blue high-heeled boots. I walked downstairs, and I smelled whatever delicious breakfast my mom was cooking. "Oh, Christy, you look beautiful," Mom exclaimed as I came into the kitchen. My eyes fell on waffles, bacon, and whipped cream. "And that looks delicious," I commented her back. "I want some," Stephanie bounded into the kitchen, probably following her nose to breakfast. Later that day, we were having a Christmas lunch feast at my Grammy's. She's the cook of the family, because I don't know how she cooks all of that food every year. When I went to greet Grammy, she noticed my necklace. "You know that necklace is capable of things you wouldn't believe." "Hang on to that," Grammy told me. It turned out Grammy was right. Later that evening, I was just wandering around Grammy's huge house with my little cousin Delilah, when we got to a part of the house that I had never been before. Then I saw a door with an unusual-looking keyhole. "Delilah, will you get, get me Grammy's magnifying glass?" I asked her. "Sure," answered Delilah in her usual cheerful mood. Delilah turned with the small magnifying glass, and I held it up to the keyhole on the door. I couldn't believe it. The keyhole was in the shape of a snowflake, like my key. I wanted to go in and try out my key, but it would be too risky with Delilah. "Um, Delilah, can you go hang out with everyone else? I need to do something," I politely tried to convince her. Okay, Delilah stalked out of the room to go and find Grammy. I took out the key and stuck it inside the small keyhole. I wasn't surprised to find out that it fit perfectly. As I pulled back the door, I felt a rushing coldness on my shoulders. I wonder if this door was only another exit. I completely opened the heavy door and was happy to find a whole empty room all to myself. I stepped into the room and realized how cold this room was compared to the rest of the house. I suddenly felt something wet and cold rest on my hand. A few more wet drops fell on me, and I wondered if there was a leak in the roof. I looked up. Nope, no leaks, just a white ceiling. A lot more drops were falling, and I knew something weird was going on now. I looked up again, and this time I saw white fluffy clouds spilling snowflakes. Snowing inside? Now this is kind of funny. I looked around the room. Wait, no walls? I realized that I probably wasn't in Grammy's house anymore, and I was getting more excited about this every second. It couldn't hurt to take a look around, could it? I decided that I really wanted to see what happened to the room that I was just in, and I wanted to see where I was. As I walked around the snowy landscape, I was surprised to see a large red building. I also saw a few odd-looking creatures emerge from the building. "Hello," I called over to the creatures. Several of them looked over at me. "Hi," one of the smaller creatures said, "we are Santa's elves." I was kind of surprised at that moment, when things started to make sense. My key was a snowflake. It was snowing. It did look like the North Pole, and Grammy said this key could lead me to things that I wouldn't believe. I knew that I wanted to meet Santa, so I might as well tell him that I wanted for Christmas that I didn't already get. "Okay," I said, "if you really are Santa's elves, then take me to see Santa." The elves huddled together, probably trying to figure out how to deal with my request. After a while, the smallest elves stepped up and said, "We'll take you to Santa's workshop on one condition: if you help us wrap gifts for one hour." "What? I thought Santa was done delivering. He came to my house," I complained to the elves. "Well, after Santa's done with his deliveries one year, we start preparing for the next, one elf explained to me." I agreed, after a lot more arguing with those pesky elves. As we went into Santa's huge workshop, I saw something out of the corner of my eye. "Santa," I called. The man in the red suit turned around and greeted me with a smile. "Hello, Christine, I know what you want for Christmas that you didn't get. I can't give that to you, though. You have to work it out for yourself." I wanted a friend for Christmas. I don't have a friend at school like most people, but I know that I can make them for myself. After getting home and back to school from winter break, I made a few friends that I know Santa gave me a little help with.
Can I ask where you got the idea for that story?
I don't really know.
You just came up with it all on your own? Amazing. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Sophia. Sophia is also at Center School, and she's in Mrs. Santa Barber's class.
My wacky stilettos. Ugh, I have plain hair. Oh, excuse me, I didn't see you there. I was just in Paris, France, studying for my college Harvard. I'm nineteen, and my name is Bella Renesme Swan. My plain is hair, my plain hair is bad, but how can my $300 stilettos help me with that? My family is in the crowd, and I can't find them, but my wacky stilettos can help. How? Read on to find out. Have you ever heard of the Louvre Art Museum? I'm in the Louvre right now. I'm looking at the fancy designer shoes, wanting to touch them so badly, but this creepy guard is staring at me. So I moved on to the Mona Lisa. After I left, I walked to the shoe store to find some shoes for this college Harvard banquet I was going to, and noticed along the way that there were many bakeries, and maybe I would come here if the Harvard banquet has disgusting food in tiny portions. When I finally got to the store there, I found the perfect rhinestone-covered shiny silver black stilettos. After my shoe shopping, I went dress shopping and found a perfect black sparkly dress for the Harvard banquet. So that night, I put my stilettos on, and I put my dress on to do hair and makeup. I wish someone could do my makeup and hair, I wondered out loudly. Then pop hands came shooting out of my stilettos and asked what hairstyle would I like. I made the best of it and requested a bun. Then I remembered I forgot to call for reservation at a restaurant tomorrow. Hey, shoes, call the restaurant Alamoone for tomorrow at six. They made my reservation. They also cooked, cleaned, combed my hair, called, write, type, and much more. When it was time to leave, my shoes walked me to the banquet, where I got an award, and I realized I was right. Everything, I mean, everything was in tiny disgusting portions. Surprisingly, my shoes ate them for me. The same with my desserts: prawn cake, sweet rice, salmon pudding, and my shoes ate them again. When I left the banquet, I noticed something mushy in my shoe. Oh, that's where all the food went. At home, I ordered my shoes to clean themselves and went to bed with my shiny award beside me. Eiffel Tower and stilettos do not go well together. How am I supposed to walk up the stairs to the top of the Eiffel Tower and stilettos? I know, just take the elevator, but no, my teacher specifically said to walk. Hmm, I found that you could also buy this foam piece thing and talk to people, but I also discovered that I could hook it up with my stilettos to talk to me, to give me advice. They, they said, just trust me, so I went on the stairs, but I couldn't feel me walking down the stairs, because my shoes were hovering me over the air, so I could count the stairs. One, two, three, four, five, nine oh six, nine oh seven, nine oh eight, and nine oh nine, all the way up to the first floor. As my shoes walked, I took pictures for photography, photography class. Note, I'm not majoring that. Once I got to the second floor, my shoes stopped so I could drink some water. By nightfall, we got to the top, and I was starving, and coincidentally, there was a restaurant, but my shoes didn't know better, so when I ordered the good meal, my shoes ate them, and everybody stared. As soon as I know it, I was in Eiffel Tower jail. Luckily, my shoes were in a different cell, and they picked the lock in their cell and in my cell. Really, the month in Paris before I got the stilettos was absolutely terrible. When I was at the airport, ready with my stilettos, of course, I got a cup of coffee and was ready to go. Before I got on the plane, the flight attendant said I couldn't bring the cup of coffee on the plane, and I was very tired, and I had to get up early, and I was not in the mood for this, so I said, okay, and I threw the full cup of coffee in the trash. No, I wasted my money. When they passed around the peanuts and thankfully coffee, I was still hungry, and I discovered that my shoes could print 3D and copy 3D, so they copied my peanut bag. I got out the plane, and boy, did I have plain hair, and thank God, my shoes combed my hair. Where were my parents in the crowd? Luckily, my shoe had a GPS that led me to them, and I introduced them to my shoes, and I went back to Harvard. Then, six years later, I became a lawyer with a Harvard degree, and I also became a writer. Harvard Law School was amazing, and my wacky stilettos led me through the way.
Can I get those shoes? How did you get the idea for this story? So this is a different, tell them a little bit about how you got the idea for this.
We had to write a narrative for my fifth-grade teacher next year, and so we had to read a story about wacky stilettos, wacky shoes, and so we could pick any shoes that we wanted to do, and so I picked stilettos, because I think it would be funny.
So you, you kind of adapted a story that was read to you, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's another way to do a creative narrative, whereas you made your whole story up, right? Amazing. Okay? Thank you.
If, if I could interrupt for a second. If any of the parents would like to come up with a child and take a picture from the front, seeing their face, instead of from the back, taking their head, we could pause for a minute to do that. Would you want to do that?
And I have a picture of all your students, if you want me to...
We have one. We took one outside. Do you want it in here?
Yeah. Even sit them all in the snack chairs.
Yeah, let them sit at the table.
Yeah, come up and sit, you can sit at the microphone.
Their novels are going to be available out in the lobby.
Okay.
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 With the mic, and you look really official.
You can slide right down a little bit.
Coffee's in case you want it in camp. To take home and read.
Love it.
You've done this before, kids, so keep smiling.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Nice job, you guys. Yeah, just, that was good.
He's very tall, he's like...
Yeah, very.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, I'm like, leaving.
I'm trying to remember how many years of law school.
I know, she wants to close it down.
I think it was three.
Are you okay?
They got so excited, they left. We'll let them go. We'll let them go. No, I thought they did a wonderful job, and I appreciated the fact that the kids came up, too, and she had some of their reading with us, so, thank you for that. Okay, no questions, we'll move on to number three on the agenda this evening. It's a fiscal 2008 budget adjustment. This, so this is next year's budget. You have a memo from Amy Reese, she's here this evening as well to answer any questions you may have on it. But the, the recommendation is actually, we currently contract with the New England Center for Children, we call it the NECT partnership program, at Parker and McCarthy Middle Schools for our ASD, one of our autism programs. And Amy is actually recommending to alter the contract for next year, and they'll still provide a lead teacher at both Parker and the high school, but actually to have our own staff provide some of the more paraprofessional support within the programs. By doing so, it actually creates a little bit of a cost savings in the contract, but then, based on the incoming students going to Parker next year, recommending splitting the class, instead of just having one, having two different classrooms at the school. It's obviously much more costly to contract for a second classroom at the building, so we're recommending at this point, hiring the staff member ourselves. So basically, the request, and I'll let Amy discuss this in a second, but the request before you is to, for right now, move $55,850 from the Special Education Contracted Services line to the Special Education Teacher Salary Line. So this employee will be one of our direct employees, instead of contracting for that employee through the service. That still actually leaves about approximately $70,000 savings from the overall savings in the contract within the budget. We're here before you tonight, because this actually affects two different pages on the budget, so it affects Fund 2310 and 2440, so we can't make that change on our own without coming before you. And Amy is then actually working with NECT to still be able to provide some additional BCBA services for that extra classroom at Parker. We don't know what the dollar amount for that's going to be yet. That'll probably still be a contracted service, but the funds will come from that $69,000 that's available. So Amy's here to answer any questions. It's really more of a program adjustment from having a contracted staff member to having an actual staff member on, on, on our staff, and this relates to Parker for next year.
I'm anticipating that the vote will be positive. Is there anyone within our system who could apply? Do we have anyone certified for this kind of job? Do we have to go out of system? And when will it be posted?
Right. Actually, it will be, it's already on the transfer list, as, in case anybody in district wants to transfer into the position.
Okay.
And I have posted as an anticipated, so we're kind of doing both simultaneously, and we'll, we'll go from there. I want to work with Dr. Parks and Parker's staff to, you know, conduct those interviews.
This is the time of year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? So we'd be looking for a motion to basically approve the, the transfer of $55,850 from the Contracted Services Line 2440 to the Teacher Salary Line 2310. And we'll incorporate that into the fiscal 18 budget. That'll still come before you in June. You need to do that one last vote to approve all of the major fund categories, but we wanted to post this position in anticipation of approval, but we want to be able to move forward before the end of June to try to make a selection, because it's so critical to get the right person in the job for the fall.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we transfer $55,850 from the Contracted Services Special Education 2442 to...
we wanted to post this position in anticipation of approval, um, but we want to be able to move forward before the end of June to try to make a selection, because it's so critical to get the right person in the job for the fall.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we transfer fifty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty from the contracted services special education twenty-four forty to the teachers' special education twenty-three ten.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any negative voter abstention? Unanimous, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next two items on the agenda are personnel reports. We missed at the last school committee agenda getting the March report on, so that's why you have, uh, two reports at the same time, but you have a, a memo from Sheriff Kirkpatrick in our, uh, Human Resources Office that basically just details the list of, uh, new hires that occurred during the month of March, um, and a couple of resignations, as well as, um, similar information for the month of April, um, new hires and then a couple of resignations. And again, we bring these reports forward to just, um, show some of the detail of people coming and going from the district, um, so if you see them when you're in buildings, uh, if you hear a name, um, you know who they are. So, I'm just bringing these forward for, um, more for your information. There's no specific vote required, um, just maybe to accept it as a report. Happy to answer any questions. Any questions? Okay. The, um, sixth and, and last item I have on the agenda this evening is approval of field trip requests. We do have two, uh, field trips, both high school-related, the class of twenty-twenty representatives, um, to go to Canterbury Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire on June twelfth, and then the CHS, uh, yearbook group to go to Bryant University in Smithfield, Rhode Island. Uh, that one's an overnight from June twenty-sixth to June twenty-seventh, so I recommend your approval for, uh, both of those field trips.
Mr. Cole said I have to get that one passed, the yearbook one, or else I'm going to have to take the final, so it's up to you, Doctor.
You're already taking the finals.
All right, appreciate it.
Money.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the CHS class of twenty-twenty representatives going to Canterbury Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire on June twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any negative voter abstention? Unanimous, five.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, a very important motion, a very stressful motion that we have to make sure punches through, that the CHS yearbook team is allowed to go to Bryant University, Smithville, Rhode Island for an overnight on June twenty-sixth, twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
You know, Mr. Cole hasn't written a final in fifteen years.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Awesome.
Any abstention or vote? I hope that helped.
I appreciate it.
Well done, Mr. Chairman.
That's all I have for the agenda.
Okay. Okay. And that, that's all I have for the agenda this evening. Any liaison reports? I'd just comment, um, on Sunday in the rain, a significant number of people showed up at the Elks to run in a fundraiser to deal, um, with prevention of any opioid crisis. Um, and I can, Bob Judge is standing there, because I don't run, um, but it was miserable, and I was really impressed, the number of people that supported that cause. Anything else that people want to share?
Just, I've, I've gone around to all the various schools, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go see him, but the, um, the construction's really, really moving along. They have foundations in all the different schools, it's great, it's unbelievable work.
You know, Mr. Dr. Lang, I just want to commend you and the entire staff, and certainly a shout-out to Gary Persicetti and, and Paul Cohen, whoever is associated with this public works, and they're just doing an unbelievable job. I, I agree with, uh, John. I've gone around to a couple of schools, and you're right on schedule, and you said you were going to get it done, and it appears it's going to happen, so thank you.
Yeah, no, the, the work is, um, is actually progressing well. I think one of the, um, you know, benefits of, of bidding this is two different projects, um, or two different scopes, was we got some great pricing on site work and also the construction. Um, obviously, we need two different vendors involved, site coordination's important, um, I think they've been able to work through, um, you know, most of the, um, the site work at this point. It's amazing how quickly the foundations have gone in, and we're really just ready for the, uh, buildings to start arriving. Um, I will actually have some pictures at the June meeting, so, um, we'll, we'll bring you some snapshots in case you haven't made it out to the sites, but we're actually a week or two, um, you know, knock on wood, ahead of schedule as far as having work done. Um, the buildings themselves are slated to leave the factory, um, sometime the mid to late first week in June to start making their way up to New England, um, so they'll physically be arriving on site before the kids leave for the end of the school year, so people will get a chance to see the, uh, the buildings themselves, but I'm thrilled with the, um, the progress. Uh, Gary and DPW and Kathleen, um, Genovin have been killing themselves to, uh, to work on this. It's, it's been a, a huge project. Uh, Brian Curley in our office that works on it, and obviously, anyone involved, um, you know, within the district has put a lot of time into the planning and preparation for the, the additional classrooms, a lot of planning and preparation in addition for the full daycare and all the different ordering, and PD and supplies that are necessary, so it, it's going to be incre- it's been a very busy spring, it's going to be incredibly busy summer, uh, but when you see the final product, I think you're all going to be very, very impressed, and, um, everything is, you know, on, on schedule or in, in, uh, a little bit early, so that's, that's exciting.
I went to the recent Energy Conservation Committee meeting, um, just because they were going to review the heat assessment that was done. They are really smart people who go to that meeting. I was not one of them, but they did come up with some really interesting ideas that weren't suggested in the assessment, um, and one of the gentlemen attending that night is in charge of facilities for a small company called Raytheon, and they, I mean, it was amazing, and they just suggested these little things be attached to motors, whatever, and it, I'm very confident that we're coming to a, a good place with the heat next year.